Good evening and welcome to the Town of Rockland Select Board Meeting for Tuesday, August 12, 2025. Please stand and join us for a seat at the White. Commissioner Valenzola, can you start us off?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live or in court for playback by WRPS at youtube.com/WRPSRockland. Please go to WRPSRockland.com for further information. First on the agenda, community announcements. Doug?
Thanks, Mike. So, the first thing we have on the agenda under community announcements is the special election on Saturday, September 13th, for the Fire Department Ladder Truck and Fire Station Project. We do have a link on the agenda to the town website where there's a ton of information for interested voters. We will be doing at least one additional community outreach meeting to help educate folks. We'll probably do that at the fire station so people can see the conditions of the station for themselves. Absentee voting is available, mail-in voting is available, and early voting in person will start on Wednesday, September 3rd. Next, I'll just skip down to Police Appreciation Day. That'll be Saturday, September 13th. I think this year, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief Cioli was talking about noon for the start time. So, everyone from the public is certainly welcome to attend that and express their appreciation for our local police department. And I know the chief has invited Reptacost and Senator Keenan as well. And then lastly, before we get to the Plymouth County Commissioners, I just wanted to mention this flyer. I forgot to put this on the agenda, but I assume many people have seen this on our social media platforms. It's a really cool initiative that the Rec Department has come up with. It's going to be a very, I'm trying to think of the right words to say, a very competitive wiffle ball tournament between Team Red and Team Blue, our Fire Department versus our Police Department. And that's going to be Friday, August 22nd, at 6:00 PM at Veterans Memorial Stadium. There's, again, more information available on our social media platforms, but it should be a lot of fun. We think both departments are really excited about doing this, and certainly it's going to be, you know, raising funds for good causes. So, lastly, we do have Plymouth County Commissioners here. I see Jared Valenzola. Jared, are you alone tonight?
Yeah.
All right. To present our most recent American Rescue Plan Act check, and so with that, I'll turn it over to Jared.
Jared, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For those who don't know, I'm Jared Valenzola, Plymouth County Commissioner and Chair, and we appreciate the opportunity to come before you this evening. We are, as we quip, on our farewell tour with ARPA. This has been a culmination of a four-year effort that the Commissioners and the Treasurer's Office undertook. Before I go any further, though, I do just want to bring the regrets of Commissioner Wright, Commissioner Hanley, as well as Treasurer O'Brien. In our attempt to get these dollars out the door as quickly as we can to these communities, we've been scheduling them fast and furious, and we know that summer schedules can be a bit difficult. So, they wanted to send their regrets. But it is pretty incredible to believe that we're at this, we're at this sort of final moment here for our ARPA program. These dollars, which I know are going towards the Water and Sewer Departments respectively in this town, is just the highest and best use. Of the $100 million ARPA funds that Plymouth County managed for our member communities, approximately 25 million of that across the county went to water and sewer infrastructure. And we don't want to take lightly how important that is. On top of the fact, and I think Rockland used several million of your ARPA allocation towards the Water and Sewer Departments, not only was that money that was one-time funds that you used to address one-time issues, but that's not, that's money you also didn't have to use from your capital fund, you didn't have to bond for, you didn't have to borrow it. So, on top of the fact that we not only brought these dollars to bear, you're also saving an interest, which you do the actuarial on that, and you're talking several million more dollars. So, it really was a win-win for the county, a win-win for our communities, and a win-win for Rockland. We did want to thank Doug, Courtney, Allison, everybody in your finance team. For folks who aren't aware, we got creative at the county level to make sure we didn't return a single penny. And of course, you know, Rockland and the other 26 towns had an allocation. Some communities were able to use them, some communities weren't. We asked every community to submit above their stated allocation in the event that they were unused dollars. Rockland was one of only 10 communities that were able to do that. And Rockland is one of the communities. So, that's a kudos to Doug and to your team here in Town Hall. Just a last bit, two, couple of quick things, and then we'll present the check or happy to take questions. But the well-traveled check, as you see, has been quite beaten up over the last four years. It's, to the surprise of many, it's dry erase. We're a very frugal operation at the county, so it gets dried and rewritten for the community that we're in. And there is a functional reason for the check. People think that we're just being facetious with it, but if folks were called during the CARES Act, we would just kind of stand there with the little checks. And one day, Treasurer O'Brien got a phone call from the bank that somebody was trying to draw money from that account. So, somebody went onto our Facebook, and they zoomed in, and they pulled the routing and the account number, and they tried to draw money. So, we created fake numbers on that check for that, so that way folks aren't able to do that. And we like to quip, it's just our way of, you know, our records go back to the pilgrims, quite literally, we are holding the land records from 1621. So, we just like to do a little something to prove that we were here and we did something. But more importantly, there's always a lot of chatter on town pages across the county about these funds and about where they're going and what they're doing. So, we do, again, appreciate the opportunity to come before select boards to show exactly, not only that the county didn't just take this money and run with it, but we distributed it to Rockland and through the work of your folks here, it went to really important infrastructure projects to address really needs. As a former resident, although still a homeowner, but a former resident, I can certainly appreciate especially the application of these dollars to the water and sewer projects. Lastly, as I said, this is our last stop on the ARPA tour, as I'll say. I did pass out for you folks, we manage 14 regional programs at the county level, and you guys participate, Rockland participates in several of them. One of the ones, and I think I had mentioned it to Doug several years ago, but as things move along, it's difficult sometimes to follow through on my end for these things. But one of the things that I'd like to highlight is the Plymouth County Other Post-Employment Benefit Trust Fund. If you look at the 10-year number there, we are polling in over 10%. That is blowing away not just the state average, but the national average. So, as we like to quip, if you're not in Peacock, ask yourself why, because you should. I'm not sure what Rockland is doing specifically to address OPEB liability, but as you can see, the returns there are incredible, and it's an incredibly well-managed program. So, we're really proud of that. And of course, we have a whole host of other programs that we're always happy to talk about that we're running at the county level, but we're working on things like mobile integrated health, regional water supply management. Doug was an excellent or helpful participant in our regional meeting back in the spring. So, we're really using these opportunities that we've had managing these federal funds to get ideas and get these things off the ground. And then the last point I'll make is, the final analysis of ARPA, national average to administer this program was about 5% to 7%. We were trending 1 and 1/4%, we're actually below 1% at the county level to administer this program, which of course has meant more money for Rockland and the other 26 member communities. And again, we have handled the backend compliance, as Doug and those who have filed know, the compliance for ARPA is very stringent, but we're proud to say that we've not been, had to claw back a single penny. We've received nothing but flying colors from the U.S. Treasury, and we're really proud of the partnership. So, that's all I have. I'm not sure if there's any questions or comments, if appropriate, Mr. Chairman, but...
I do want to echo something you said with these funds on must-do projects. These are funds that would otherwise have to be pulled from taxpayers here in Rockland. You highlighted the interest payments, and that's just one piece of the savings. These are must-do projects that otherwise would need to be funded with taxpayer money. So, thanks to the leadership team here, saving Rockland taxpayers. It doesn't get highlighted enough, but there's tremendous work that happens every day to try to save the taxpayers of Rockland, and I want to thank you for your part in that too.
Thank you.
All right. Marty?
Yeah, I also wanted to thank you, Jared, for, you know, the opportunity to apply for this program, and I think it was a fabulous program. I'm just curious, so, does the money we're getting now, the overage, is that separate from the money that Hanover had? I read an article that was something weird with Hanover's ARPA money. I mean, is that something completely separate?
I think, as I said, there were several communities that weren't able to fully utilize their allocation in the interest of making sure we didn't return a single penny to the federal government, which is a charge that we gave to the Treasurer's Office. We had asked communities back in the fall to submit up to 10% over what their original allocation was. So, in the final analysis, when the new year began, of course, we needed to have these obligated by December 31st. When we looked at, when we looked at those obligations, we noted that there were communities that didn't fully utilize their allocation, and so we were able to repurpose those funds to Rockland and nine other communities within the county that were able to utilize them.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, without any further ado, I will need to present the newest member of the Plymouth County Advisory Committee, Select Board Member Owen.
First, the real ones here for...
I'll take the real one.
Yeah, you take the real one.
Thank you.
Get in the bag.
Thank you very much.
I'll follow someone for a picture. So, again, 400 years when people look back, yeah, we go. So, that way, in 400 years, when people look back on this, they can say I did something.
All right, three, two. Got it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. See ya. Jared, thank you. Thank you, Jared. Okay, next on the agenda, minutes for 7:00, 8:25. I will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, next on the agenda, under new business, entertainment license, Space Bistro, 323 Union Street. Anybody here from Space Bistro?
Yeah.
Come on up, guys. Hi, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
So, if you want to just introduce yourselves and then just explain what it is that you're here for.
Yes, so, can you hear me?
Yeah, just try to speak up, because just so you know, the microphones don't amplify, they, that's just for the video, so you've got to project your voice.
Okay. So, my name is Rafaela, and he's Thiago. He's the owner of the Space Bistro. We are here to apply for the entertainment license. Space Bistro is a sushi restaurant on the 323...
323.
Yes.
323.
Yes, Union Street. We've been there for an year right now. We already have the liquor and wine license, liquor license, so we are trying to improve the business with live music, only acoustic with singer and guitar people playing there. So, that's why we are here today.
Okay, any questions or comments from any members of the board? Marty?
Yes, your restaurant is, well, to keep it a space, being stellar, and I'd be happy to make a motion for, to grant them an entertainment license.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there an opportunity for comments from the public?
You know Karen, I'll go. Yeah, all right.
Okay. Karen Hafner, 326 Spring Street, Rockland. I'm here to speak in favor of the licenser request. Space Bistro has been a wonderful addition to our downtown and to our town. It's local and perfect. We're going out to dinner to celebrate your brother's birthday, for instance, or just to stop by for a drink and something like, and with an entertainment license, they'll be able to do even more. By the way, Space Bistro is known for their sushi, but actually, they have something on the menu for everybody. So, members of the ward, I hope you grant this request and wish Space Bistro continued success. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You got nervous for a second. That was, that was a nice message. I always get nervous. I'm like, she's testing me on my first night there. Okay, so I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor? That's unanimous, guys. Good luck. Good luck. Thank you.
Also, I don't know if we can speak with you later. We would like to apply for the full liquor license.
So, you should just swing by, say tomorrow, and speak to Sue in your office?
Yeah, if you, the office right next door to here, Sue can help you with that application.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay, next on the agenda, is there any Board of Appeals reappointment? Rob Rosa? Rob, welcome. If you want to just introduce yourself and give your address, stuff like that.
Sure. Rob Rosa, 474 Beach Street. And for the past 14 years, I've been on, I've had the pleasure of being on the Rockland Zoning Board of Appeals. The last five were as chairman, and it was fun. It was definitely fun. Up until recently, and obviously, y'all know, I resigned. I've had issues over the course of the 14 years, and I've always, I've brought these up to certain people before you. I brought these up, and issues just kind of, just went by the wayside. Recently, concerns, issues started to come up that echoed some that other members of regulatory boards and departments had. Knowing that theirs kind of went by the wayside, who's going to listen to me? And in the grand scheme of things, it was my misconception that your board was unapproachable. It was my misconception. Several of your members have reached out and just told me I was wrong, and I didn't expect that. I didn't think that. I, I just, I did not think that my concerns would ever be heard. Since then, again, I was asked by several members, by several, by several member townspeople and members of the local government to reconsider, and based on meetings that we've had, I'm, I would like to be a member of the zoning board again. It was a very hasty decision. It was basically made after two weeks of no sleep, and unfortunately, I jumped when I should have pivoted. So, I screwed up. I'm asking for a second chance. That's where we are, and that's where we are at this point.
Anybody have any questions?
Hey, just a comment, Rob. I've attended your meetings. You're obviously very passionate. You run a great meeting. I think the situation we're in now is a result of your passion and your care for the town and the projects that happen here. I was, I was sad to hear that your resignation came in. I actually had written some nice words about you, was asked to reserve those in hopes that today would come. So, I'm very delighted to see you're here, seeking reappointment. I think the town is better having you on that board.
Thank you for those kind of words, sir. Appreciate that.
Marty, anything?
Yeah, Rob, I support you coming back on the board. I believe that, you know, a communication issue can totally be resolved easily, and like, I chatted with you on the phone, and I have a lot of confidence in you, and I've known you for many years, and, you know, I just, sorry? I just believe that you're extremely passionate and a very cool guy, and, you know, you're a positive force in this town. So, and like I told you on the phone, I mean, I would be happy to hear any concerns that you have and, you know, try to segue through Doug and the correct departments to get questions answered. And, I mean, my wheelhouse is really not zoning and planning, so if you, I welcome you coming to me with anything because it's a learning experience for me, and it makes me, and I guess everybody else on board that you approach, do better for the town. And I think that's like the hallmark of this whole discussion is, you know, to do its best to bring Rockland forward. And that's it.
Thank you, Marty.
I guess I've been kind of honestly flip-flopping on this. This resignation letter really was jolting here, you know, reading some of the things that are in here.
I understand. I was, I was determined, and I knew what I was doing.
Yeah, yeah.
I was...
And so, you're, this was just a moment of passion, so to speak, and you just kind of went a little over the top, and your, everything in here that you wrote, you think you can, I don't want to say get, you know, get past it or work on these things?
The issues, the issues that I have at hand are being actively worked on. Okay. I am, I'm, I'm okay at this point, knowing that, knowing that your board is actually listening to me. That alone, is that alone says a lot. Coming from parents that just did not listen to me ever, ever, for anything.
So, you blaming your parents for that?
No, no, no. I'm just, it's PTSD, if you will, you know, just not, just knowing that, knowing that the administration is the administration. I didn't think I had a choice. I didn't think I did, and it's been, I've been convinced that I was wrong, and I've been wrong before, and happy to be wrong this time. So, okay.
So, Rob, obviously, you know, through our discussions, you are fully aware that you have some tensions to mend with both your board, with some members of the town departments as well.
Absolutely.
And I look forward to the outcome of those resolutions. With that, I'll entertain a motion from anyone on the board. What's the law of the board?
Motion to approve Rob Rosa to voting, uh, Zoning Board of Appeals.
With the caveat that it would just be till the completion of this term, which is up in May of 2026, and you just have to reapply again for the next five year term if that's the case.
That's fine by me.
All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Welcome back.
Thank you, Select Board Members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Baker, thanks for showing up tonight.
Thank you.
Nice to see you, sport.
Before we move on, there are three alternate openings on the ZBA, so if anyone out there has any interest in learning about this, getting involved, we would love to have you step up and, and learn about it and get involved, so.
Well said. Thank you, John. All right, next on the agenda, update and rebook board signature authority designation for expenditures. Doug, you and I had some conversation, but that way we can kick it off.
Yep, and just before I do, if you don't mind, Mike, I just want to piggyback on what John just said, and I'm glad you made that point, John, because the zoning board is a regulatory board. It is critically important. It doesn't just provide advice. They are legally binding decisions, and if they don't act within certain timeframes, things can get automatically, they call it constructively approved. It's very, very important, so I'm glad you brought it up, John. I should have mentioned it myself, so I encourage everyone to apply for those alternate positions, just like John said. Getting back to the next item on the agenda, the, the signature authority designation, what, the way we've done this, when I first got here, it was just the traditional way of signing off on all the warrants, where you'd need, you know, at least a full quorum of the board. We had a number of instances over times periodically with people going on vacation or people might be being sick, and then it was literally hard to get those required three signatures. So, we researched it, and the board is able, which we've done the last few years, to have you vote one or two people to be your designees, which means that all five board members can always review and sign the warrant. Nobody's precluded from that, but in the event that we don't have all five or we don't even have a quorum, traditionally, the way we've done it is the chair or the vice chair, as long as we have one of their signatures, were covered legally because of a vote that you've taken before. The way we've done this in the past is you've voted to designate specific people, and I had a conversation with a town accountant about this today. My recommendation is, if you agree, to vote the positions of chair and vice chair. So, that would automatically continue. If you reorganize next year, you have a different chair and vice chair. We don't have to keep doing this. You can always undo it whenever you want. You can always revoke that and say you don't want to designate anybody. And again, all five of you can always come in. It doesn't stop anybody from reviewing and signing it. It just helps us out in the instance where people are on vacation or aren't feeling well, and if we don't get the required signatures, we can't make payroll, we can't pay vendors. It's really important. So, I'd recommend you vote the positions of chair and vice chair as the designees in the event you don't get a quorum.
Any further discussion?
I did just have one kind of question on that, and maybe this is like the one in a million chance. What if the majority of the board doesn't want to sign off on a particular warrant, but one of the designated signees do? How would that?
Yeah, so I guess, I guess in that instance, you're right, that that would be approved if the, if the individual that you vote to designate signs it. So, but I guess what I would imagine would happen in that instance is, the only way, I assume, a board member would not want to sign off on part of a warrant is because you, one of you went and reviewed it and said, I, I don't, I don't agree with that. I imagine what would happen at that point would be, one of you would ask me about it, there'd be a conversation, we'd look into it, and if there was still disagreement, I imagine there'd be another phone call to the chair and vice chair saying, timeout, we have to, maybe we pull that one aside. I mean, there's a way to handle it, but technically, I think you're right, unless, unless you vote some kind of contingency process in place. We've only had that happen once, as you know, and that particular warrant was pulled, and that was, you know, was discussed separately, and that process was in place where it could have just been signed by the chair or vice chair, but it wasn't. The chair chose to pull that out and have a separate conversation about it. So, that's the only instance that's happened that I'm aware of, and even though we had that process in place, it still was handled separately. But we can do it however you guys want to do it.
And so, this, having a single or, you know, two different people sign off, is, was that a COVID thing, or was that exist ahead of COVID?
I'd have to go back and check exactly when. I think it was before, because I don't think it was COVID. From what I recall, we had a couple instances where, like, a couple people on vacation and, like, one person sick, and that only left two people, and we didn't have enough.
Yeah, okay.
I believe that that's what instigated it.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking about, you know, lightning strike kind of, you know... Yeah. I mean, I'm, we're talking about, you know, lightning strike kind of, you know, never going to happen kind of things. But I just have some concerns about voting away my ability to sign off on the warrant. Because I do sign on it, but, you know, if I ever did object to something hypothetically, it could still, still go through, but if, even without a majority, but not enough that I'm going to vote against it. I just wanted to.
Well, you know, I, I mean, I agree with that and I'll, I'll make the commitment in public as chair that if there's a concern about something on the warrant that you have, I, I won't sign off until we have the appropriate discussion, but.
Okay.
I think that that's reasonable. You know, that way everybody feels heard up there, so. All right?
Yep.
Oh, yeah. Um, yeah, I agree with that. You know, just.
I forgot she was here. Sorry, Lori.
Just, yeah, no, just, just come to us beforehand and, you know, we can decide to chat about it publicly.
Okay.
And.
So do I have a, a motion for the chair, the positions of vice chair, chair and vice chair to be the signatories?
Make a motion to approve the chair and vice chair to be the signature authority designation for expenditures.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you, guys. Next on the agenda, other new business, not reasonably anticipated?
I have none.
Okay. Under old business, collective bargaining agreements, public announcement, AFS CME Council 93 Clerical.
Thanks, Mike. So we are working our way through all the collective bargaining negotiations with our unions. And I wanted to publicly announce, as the board already knows, that we've reached an agreement with our clerical union, which is AFS ME Council 93. And it's consistent with all of our other collective bargaining agreements, looking at annual two and a half percent salary increases to make sure that it's financially sustainable. And then nothing else really major in the contract. You'll see in several of the different units, we're looking at updating some of our bereavement leave policies to recognize, you know, changes in families. And there's also, you know, some small things about things like clothing allowance and sick leave, et cetera. But really for this specific unit, you know, the, the annual salary increase was really the, the most significant item. So I'm pleased that we had good relationships with that union and we've successfully negotiated it and just reporting out publicly.
Thank you, Doug. Next on the agenda, Pleasant Street landfill project, RFP. Dave, Doug?
Great. Thank you, Mike. So as the board knows, we had a public discussion at a board meeting a number of months ago when the, the town planner, Allison Quinn, came up with the idea to save taxpayers over $5 million that we would have to pay through taxes to properly cap the landfill on Pleasant Street, which is closed but not formally capped, to do that per all DEP requirements. And we brought in a firm that she had done some research with, that if all, a million details are worked out, can bring in fill from other sites, construction sites, things like that. There's value to them to bring in that fill into our landfill, which we would not charge them for. They would then pay to 100% of the cost to cap the landfill per all DEP requirements, again, saving us at least $5 million. And then on top of that, construct some kind of public amenities. Could be on top of the landfill, could be something, I'm just giving examples, like a dog park, pickleball court, fitness, you know, a fitness set, that type of thing. I don't think we would look at solar for that site. It's too small and we're already pretty maxed out on our solar credits in town. And/or we could also look at cash donations from the successful entity, which could be used for other park projects like Harts of Park or maybe even down by Reed's Pond. So at that prior meeting, you guys authorized this and directed us to go full speed ahead. So I'm here tonight to present the final draft of the RFP that we've produced. Again, our planner, Allison Quinn, did the initial draft of this document and we've had a lot of review on it. We had our engineering consulting firm that does all the quarterly landfill monitoring at both Beach Street and Pleasant Street, who's also, it's CDM Smith, and they're also very familiar with these types of projects. So it was very helpful to have their technical expertise. They reviewed it. Courtney and I reviewed it. And then our land use attorney, Bob Galvin, gave it a final review. So this, this reflects quite a bit, but I'm happy to, to make any changes that, that you might want. I'll just highlight really a couple of things on, on page two toward the top, number three. One of the things that we're putting in as a requirement, and this is in letter E in your binder, if you don't have it. One of the things that we're going to require the successful firm to do is develop and implement a community engagement plan. And that'll include, you know, at least a community meeting and a select board meeting. So the, the purpose there is, again, this is all going to be 100% safe and approved by the Department of Environmental Protection. But understanding that this is going to involve adding material, you know, into a landfill, people are going to have questions and as they should. And so part of this, in addition to the physical, technical work they're doing, will be community engagement, community outreach. That's important. If you also look on the bottom of page two under number five, that references what I just alluded to a moment ago, which will also be receptive to monetary contributions that we would allocate to other passive or active recreational sites in town, including but not limited to Harts of Park. If you, and I, I'm happy to go back at any point, but I'm just going to kind of skim through this. If you go down to page five, you'll see our, our schedule. We're planning on issuing this a week from tomorrow, Wednesday, August 20th. We're looking at a, an optional site visit, a date for when questions are due to the town, final release of any addenda, and then the, the due date, I actually am extending it by two days. It's going to be September 19th. So we're going to, it's, has to be available for at least four weeks when you deal with land related procurement issues. So again, we're going to issue it Wednesday, August 20th. Responses will be due on September 19th. And theoretically, you know, we anticipate that our deadline for selecting the successful company would be October 21st. You'll also see just a number of other conditions in the, in the RFP. One of the most important ones, if you look on page seven. Number one, we talk about all the different types of bonds and insurance that's required. So a surety bond under number one for 100% for payments and payment and performance, that's critically important. You want to make sure something isn't started and, and not finished. So that's very important. Certificate of Insurance, it's referencing an appendix C, which, when you look on page 18, we have very stringent insurance requirements that we're requiring, plus whatever else is also required by the DEP. And we made sure to run this by our insurance carrier to make sure that the town was properly protected. If you keep going, you'll see there's all the different components of what is going to be required in their proposal, company profile, listing of all their licenses, insurance, the project team, their capital financing structure, and the project design and approach. So there's, there's a lot of information, detailed information that's required because we want to make sure that we hire someone, a firm, where maybe the firm itself doesn't have to have been in existence, you know, for 30 years, but the individuals that will be working on this project have to have a, a minimum amount of directly relevant experience. When you go onto page 12, you can see our evaluation criteria. And I'll just quickly list them, the quality of their past projects, the personnel qualifications and abilities, financing, any comments or changes to our proposed contract and license agreement, their approach and schedule, and then the summary of their benefits to the town. So those are all the categories that we're going to be evaluating and comparing different proposals. Then you'll see after that, there's, there's a site plan, some property record cards. You'll see the insurance requirements, some standard forms. There's also a license agreement, which is temporary permission, you know, to access the site. And then there'll also be a full contract, which Attorney Galvin has drafted. I'll probably also include one of the most recent quarterly monitoring reports from CDM Smith. They're very thick documents and it has all the technical information about what's in the ground currently, what's leaching, if anything is leaching at all, and it's all, you know, engineered. So basically, in a nutshell, that's it. We're ready to roll. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have or make any changes that you want. But I'm excited about this project. I think this could be a really good thing for the town.
Any questions, comments?
Lori?
Yeah, um, you know, I, this is a project that has needed to be done for literally years, decades. So I'm excited that it's happening and I'm excited for the possibilities of what we can put on the land or around the land once it's capped. So it seems like a win-win and Rockland needs a win. So that's it.
Thanks, Lori. Doug, any, any requirements as to the number of bids needed? Nothing? Okay.
Nope. Nope. As long as, you know, we'll, we'll do all the proper advertising and the central register and the newspaper and all that. All we need is one good one. We don't have to have a minimum number of submissions.
And this was a project that when we had that group meeting before, they said that the cost to the residents was going to be, what was it again?
Well, my, the estimate I've received from CDM Smith, our engineer, five, six years ago when I started, back then it was $5 million. So I'm sure it's.
So, so the cost to the residents with one of these companies coming in will be zero?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. The, the cost for us to do this work on our own would be over $5 million. If we engage a company to do this, the cost is zero, but it's actually better than that. It's zero plus, we're going to get all kinds of other amenities that would have cost us hundreds of hundreds of thousands of dollars that we won't have to pay for.
That's great.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I think there's an opportunity to put this on the open space and rec plan that we're working on right now.
That's what I was going to mention in the next section to you. Yeah. No, you're good. You're right there.
No, it, it's a great opportunity for folks to access land otherwise not accessible. I actually took a drive up there the other night. Cleveland and I have been in this town for, you know, over 30 years and I've never been on that property. And I was, I was a good kid. I didn't, I know you talked about walking around there, but.
I just grew up in that neighborhood.
I know. But yeah, I wanted to check it out. I spent a lot of time in the backwoods around Harts of. I, I think it's, it's a wonderful area and look forward to, to what the proposals bring.
Thank you.
I wanted to say one more thing.
Yep.
Yeah, this, you know, it has been a long time coming and some people might say that, what, we, we don't have to pay anything for this, like, what's the catch? And the reason that we don't pay anything is because there's construction companies that need to take dirt and put it somewhere. So it serves a purpose for them, so they cover all the costs. So I just wanted to mention that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Next is select board liaison appointments. So I reached out to each member of the board today to discuss the liaison appointments. And what I kind of came up with was that we were going to eliminate the position of liaison, except with the exception of John continuing on as the permanent county advisory board liaison for the town and Steve, open space and recreation committee member, and then specifically liaison to the open space committee. But, you know, I, I think it's one of those things that every one of us as elected officials and members of the board of selectmen, we can go at any time to any board or committee and, and ask what's going on. And they in turn can come to any one of us at any time to see what our thoughts are as, as select board members. So I, I think it's something that, that I think it actually opens up the communication because it doesn't limit it to, you know, one person, you know, being territorial about something. And, and having been on the board for as long as I have, I've seen it become an issue before with access to certain boards or committees because you're not the liaison. So I just, I just think that this opens up for a better conversation for each one of us to have with each department and bring back a different unique perspective from the different people that are talking to the different departments. But Doug, you know, when I was talking to Steve earlier, he, he did say that, you know, he thought it would be a good idea to just put something out to the boards and committees just to make them aware of this decision and just add kind of the language that every member of the board of selectmen is open to, to, you know, a conversation with them at any time to, to help assist them in, in getting whatever projects accomplished or, or, you know, be it in between, between them and town hall, whatever it might be, whatever they might be requiring, you know, so.
Yep, no problem.
If I may, I think it was amplified by Rob Rosa earlier. You know, he was a chair on a board in our town and didn't feel he could come to the board of selectmen. So I think it's important.
Select board.
Select board, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay, Lori.
I'm always usually really careful about that. The, but it highlighted the issue, right, that folks may feel intimidated or that their, their thoughts may not be heard. For us all to be accessible and open, I think this, especially this group on the select board is probably one of the most open boards to bring your concerns. So I look forward to it. I look forward to the change. But yeah, communication out to the committees and, and boards to let them know that we're all approachable, either through Doug or directly through the email system. We're happy to, to listen, answer questions, take feedback, attend meetings if asked. And I think communication goes a long way into letting folks know that, you know, it's not just their selected individual. And we want to be collaborative, want to work with them all to make Rockland a better place.
Anybody else? Any concerns? Anybody good with that? Okay.
Yeah.
Moving on. Other old business, not reasonably anticipated? Doug?
I have none.
Okay. Number six, select board liaison update for the last time. Anybody have anything? Okay, we're good. Moving on.
I do want to mention, actually.
Okay, there we go. I didn't want to link it too long in case.
So no, the Open Space and Recreation Planning Committee and the Housing Production Planning Committee all met on Monday to kick off those processes. It was a great discussion and want to thank everyone for their volunteering to be on that committee.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Next on the agenda, town administrative report and correspondence. Doug?
Thanks, Mike. As some on the board know, but I just want to let the community know, Tiffany's not feeling well. That's why she's not here tonight. She sends her regrets. Next, I wanted to mention a high-profile issue. We're going forward with the hazmat demo removal at the Lincoln School at 99 Church Street. That's sort of a step one in the, the demo of the whole building. After consulting with our engine, our architect, our architect and the environmental firm that did the assessment, it quickly became apparent that it made more sense to do it in two steps. So we're going out to bid right now just for the removal and disposal of the hazmat, which is mainly, you know, asbestos and a variety of things, plus, you know, fluorescent bulbs and, you know, lots of other, lots of other hazardous material, paints, things like that. So we have an invitations for bid. We're, we're doing the, the public procurement route. It's available right now on the town website if anybody is a glutton for punishment and they want to take a look at what that looks like. It's on the homepage under bids. Bids will be due on August 27th. And I really want to highlight especially for the neighbors and the butters in that area that our, our engineering consultant is a local environmental engineering firm, Green Environmental. They did the hazmat survey. They did the initial report. They helped us draft the specifications. And they will be supervising the contractor on site to make sure everything is done in strict accordance with all DEP rules and regulations. So I just, you know, people get concerned when we talk about hazardous materials, but this is all going to be done properly and will be supervised by the appropriate experts. And then after that, as I just indicated, a moment ago, we'll go forward putting the plans and specs together for the demo of the whole building. Hopefully that can also occur later this fall. Next, I just wanted to.
Can I stop you?
Oh, sure.
Just a question on that because it came to me this past weekend from a constituent in that area around the Lincoln School. It would be helpful, I think, to maybe just a one pager of the types of containment, once, you know, once we land on whomever is going to do that removal and how we're protecting the neighborhood. I think it would go a long way for that community to, to really understand, because I know we're taking it serious.
Yep.
And I think, you know, when we talk about, you know, following proper procedure to removal, you know, we trust that these professionals are going to do their job and, and do it right. However, if, if I was a neighbor in and a butter, I would probably have a little bit higher level of concern about what specifically is being done. And so I, I empathize with, with those folks. So I think just, you know, some kind of public outreach, well, here's what we're going to do to keep everyone safe, I think would go a long way.
No problem. That'll be easy to do. Yep. No, no issues.
Makes sense.
Next, I, I just wanted to very briefly just address a, a question that I've heard kind of rumbling in the community. And I, I don't want to go into any depth, but I just want to make kind of one broad comment that I think might allay some concerns or some miscommunications in the community. And these revolve around the authority of the police chief versus the select board in dealing with personnel matters. in dealing with personnel matters. So in Rockland, we have what's generally referred to as a quote-unquote "strong chief", and the strong refers to the amount of authority and power that that position has. And per our town charter, which is our legally binding, you know, constitution for the town, it says, and I quote, "The chief of police shall have full authority to appoint, demote, suspend, and terminate all the police officers and the command officers of the police department." So I just want to make it clear that the, anything relating to hiring, discipline, termination, any of that stuff, that all rests solely with the police chief. The select board does not have a role, nor do I have a role in that process. The select board obviously hires the police chief, but he or she, whoever's in that role, has full authority over personnel. So I just wanted the community to be aware of that because I think there's a lot of misconceptions. Two other quick ones. One is, I just wanted to highlight that I haven't even spoken to Mike about this yet, but tentatively, I've been speaking with the developers and the redevelopment authority at Union Point, and we're tentatively looking at having them come into the September 16th select board meeting for an update, once I go over that with Mike, and if that date doesn't work, we can, we can find another one. But there's been a lot of planning activity on their end, and I think it would be good to get a public update from them. And then lastly, I just wanted to make a pitch for the Abington-Rockland Joint Waterworks. There are, as you all know, there are two different boards of water commissioners, one in Rockland, one in Abington, and then they meet jointly together. The Rockland Board is supposed to have three members, we currently only have two, so there is a vacancy, and we, you know, it's a really, really important board. And so anybody that's interested in potentially being appointed until the next election for the Rockland Board of Water Commissioners should submit an application here at Town Hall. They could also call Crystal Cameron, the superintendent at the Water Department, to talk to her and get some additional information. So just want to put that pitch out there, it's very important. That's all I have today.
Thank you Doug. Select board comments, comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the select board, and that the opinions and comments are only the individual member. Select board member Edward?
I guess my one comment, I kind of mentioned it earlier with the ZBA, is we need people to step up across the board. I know, if you go to the town's website, you can find out the openings on the various boards and committees. We do need the residents to step up, and especially on the, on the ZBA, I know Doug mentioned this, but there could come a case where something gets automatically approved if, say, they only have four members, that they need to have all five members at, you know, some of these hearings. And that'd be kind of a shame that, just due to, you know, apathy or the lack of interest by the public or willingness to step up, that, you know, something negative like that could happen. So I've said this before, step up, get involved.
Thank you John. Vice Chair Charles?
Yeah, there's a couple things. First of all, I, I wish that for all of our students in Rockland have a smooth transition into this coming year when school starts. And the second thing was, there's a lot of misinformation about, out there about A, the fire department or fire station project, and B, the water issue, PFAS issue. We, I just wanted to reiterate, we have, we took a $26 million interest-free loan between Abington and us, so we owe 13 million at the end of this project, Abington owes 13 million at the end of this project, to remediate PFAS completely, and that project is still on schedule to be completed by March of 2026. If you go on arjww.com, it will go to the Abington-Rockland Joint Waterworks website where you can see photos of everything that has been completed so far with that project, you know, and, and people are saying, especially online, that we're not voting for a new firehouse until our water's taken care of. The water is actively being taken care of, so, and I highly recommend everyone out there educate themselves about the pluses and minuses about building a new firehouse, and that if you, if you go into the election, with the special election, with only the viewpoint that I don't want my taxes raised $200 a year or so, then, you know, there's a huge arc of positive things about having this new firehouse, and I highly recommend you educate yourself before coming to the polls, and that's all, yeah.
Thank you Rory.
So for myself, I have no comments tonight, I'm going to defer to select board member O'Donnell for a very important message.
Thank you. And so folks will bear with me, this one is a bit long, and I promise not to be this long in future meetings, but this is an important one. Sunday, August 31st is International Overdose Awareness Day. Since the invention of fentanyl, the U.S. has seen overdose deaths skyrocket. In Rockland alone, from July 2019 through June 2024, we've seen 32 opioid-related deaths in Rockland. In the same time period, Rockland saw 65 substance-related deaths in total. Almost half of all substance-related deaths were attributed to opioid use. Of those 32 opioid-related deaths, 26 were due to fentanyl. Even more shocking to me, there were zero deaths attributed to heroin in that time. The problem with statistics like these, they're easy to cast aside, they aren't relatable. Our society, and maybe it's human nature, has a habit of dehumanizing classes of people so we don't dwell too long on their suffering. Words like addict and junkie are used to refer to people with substance use disorder. It strips them of their individual humanity and reduces them to a stereotype. These labels allow us to justify mistreatment, reinforce social hierarchies, and allow us to look the other way without remorse. In honor of Overdose Awareness Day, I'll share a personal story that adds a human component to an ugly disease that has taken and continues to take far too many women much too soon. It was early on a Monday morning, I was running late for work, pouring my coffee into a travel mug. My phone rang. Tim is in the emergency room, he overdosed. "Ah, okay," I responded, "here we go again, thinking." I texted my boss and told him, "Oh, he'd likely be taking the day off." My brother was in the hospital again for opioid use. I was frustrated. He'd been doing so well, he had a good job and was in line for promotion. Why would he throw it all away after working so hard? A few minutes later, my phone rang again. "Steve, Tim's dead." Didn't quite register right away. I said, "Thank you, I'm heading to the hospital now, I'll see you there." I hung up the phone, turned my wife, and relayed the news. I texted my boss, "He's gone, I don't know when I'll be in next." My children witnessed me weep for the first time that day. When I arrived at the now demolished Quincy Medical Center E-Day, the only part of the hospital that was still open in June of 2019, I was escorted into a room with my parents, my brother and sister, Tim's girlfriend, and Tim. The endotracheal tube was still in his mouth, the scene was somber and surreal. I was briefly left alone with him for a short time after arriving. I recall feeling enraged at him, so much so that I wanted to give him a good punch in his arm, which is a common expression of dissatisfaction between he and I growing up. Our family had been broken, what had impacted so many others before and after just became real. As my parents planned memorial services, I asked that he be held in wake at Magoon Biggins Funeral Home on Union Street. My parents balked at the idea. We have a family, we have a family that own a funeral parlor in Dorchester, it would have been significantly less expensive to lean on our family. I expressed that it was important for the town of Rockland to see such a large crowd on Union Street, and asked the question, "Who died? What happened?" It's still very common for victims of the opioid epidemic to have cryptic obituaries. This serves nobody except maybe the author's ego, as if an overdose-related death somehow makes a family name lesser. I wanted to ensure it was known and felt. This time, it was in the open. This time, it was a well-known, well-regarded person who fell victim to the health crisis known as addiction. Dan Biggins and his team were masterful in their approach. Our family is grateful for how his services were handled. It ended with a procession from Holy Family by Players where he was a bouncer, by Rockland Athletics where he worked as a sales associate, by Themas Pizza where my siblings and I had worked in our younger years, by our childhood home on Conquest Street, by the Spring Street ballfields where we spent so much of our time growing up, and it's around Center Street. For those who have not been directly impacted by addiction, it can be difficult to truly grasp. It took my brother's death to really open my eyes, even though I'd been exposed to addiction and its impacts through him and others. I lost my first friend Mike Wilkins to an overdose 21 years ago. 15 years later, I would lose my brother, Timothy O'Donnell. Less than a month later, a mutual friend of Tim and mine, Nick Barkley Chase, another child of Rockland, who had come to Tim's wake to pay his respects, lost his battle with addiction. I lost another at the beginning of the COVID pandemic. Do not write these names to Shane Leesman. I write their names to remember them, to bring personalization to this silent epidemic. Addiction is not a weakness, it is a disease with genetic ties to predisposition. Depersonalization allows us to turn away from the problem with the thought that it won't impact us, or that these individuals didn't try hard enough. The hardest part is knowing I was of this mindset prior to losing my brother. Mike was my friend and I loved him, but I rationalized his death as a mistake, not looking deeper at his struggle. As Tim attended rehab multiple times, he hated it, then accepted it, then embraced it. He would be released and slip into old habits. When he finally lost his fight, no one saw it coming. He was doing so well, he'd been clean for months, he was outwardly happy. What we didn't see was his internal battle that he fought every day. It was that day when my mindset changed. It was that day I could no longer pretend for my own mental health that this was an issue that impacted other people. There needs to be a better way to treat this disease than what we have. Its success rate is abysmal. When someone slips into the grips of addiction, their social support system collapses, they lose their job, they lose their insurance, and often, they lose their family and friends. The safety net of Medicaid is not enough. The only services that take Medicaid are understaffed because they're underfunded. There needs to be an overhaul of the mental health care system. There needs to be an overhaul of the programs that transition those with addiction, halfwayhouses, job training, outpatient therapy. Most halfwayhouses are open as a noble approach to help these individuals get back on their feet, but because funding is so many-skill, they often have leaky roofs, broken windows, and are in neighborhoods that are being swallowed by the epidemic themselves. I don't have answers, I wish that I did. I only know that change is needed. Criminalizing drug use is not the answer. I often wonder what would happen if we took all the money that's spent on the war on drugs and put it into rehab services, mental health services, and education. For a start, we need a conversation. We need to start treating and talking about mental health issues as routinely as we would have broken ankle. Addiction to mental health is not Beetlejuice, it will not manifest if we say the words three times. Until we begin having a national, worldwide conversation, we will not end the stigma, but it needs to start at the local level. I want to acknowledge the work that Rockland Cares does for our community. I would also like to invite anyone impacted by substance use disorder, or those who would like to show support for the community of those impacted, to attend the 2025 Annual Overdose Vigil by Candlelight at Massasoia Community College on Tuesday, August 26th at 6:00 p.m. on the Quad, hosted by the Brockland Area Prevention Collaborative. Thank you.
Thank you Steve. With that, I want to adjourn. To enter into executive session, not to reconvene, per Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase exchange lease of value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on negotiating position of public body, parcel ID 78-9-0, per Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, AFS, CME, Council 93, Highway and IAFF, Local 1602 Fire, per Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, National Opioid Litigation, and per Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, for the review and approval of executive session minutes, for 9523, 1017, 2326, 2457, 24618, 242425, 61725, 7825, 31825, and 52025. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So made.
I have a motion, or a second?
Second.
Second, all of us in favor? All right, roll call. Rory?
Yes.
Select board member O'Donnell?
Yes.
Select board member Edward?
Yes.
And myself. Thank you everyone, good night.